Dave, can you come on up? Dave Palet.
Probably easiest behind if you want.
I've never had quite an award like this to give out, Dave. I'd like to present this award to Dave Palet in recognition of 40 years of loyal and exemplary service to public safety in Canada. The one bar is for 30 years. The second bar is for 40 years. And you also received 35-year provincial long service award from the Office of the Fire Commissioner. Dave is instrumental in the day-to-day functions of the department. He's willing to lend a hand wherever it be, on apparatus or hall repairs, public education or public events. You can always count on Dave for calls and practices. In 2019, he attended over 90 calls and over 30 practices. Dave has 100% practice attendance in the last quarter. Dave constantly participates in up-to-date training and is an advocate for constant learning in the fire service. Honor, courage, pride, and commitment are what comes to mind when you think of Dave. Wow. That's pretty amazing. So, I've never had so many plaques to award at once, so I'm not sure how to coordinate this. This will need to be straightened a bit. But let's see if we can hold them all up here.
Betty?
Yes.
That's okay, I can do that.
You want to take two up? There we go, we're balanced. Amazing career, Dave. Okay, I'll call this regular council meeting to order. First item of business is the agenda, which we are changing at this point.
Congratulations.
Differ item 11C, B, and E to the January 27th meeting. Making note. Late item 12A, Officer Positions Established Bylaw, 2062. Late item 12B, Discussion of 7500 Donaldson Drive. 12A subject. Daniel, can you?
Yes, that's when we get to item 12A.
Okay, I see. That's just moving on to 12A.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
That was referred from this morning's meeting.
Yes, which I wasn't asked. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillor Krog, Councillor Thompson, all those in favor? We have a set of minutes here. We have the special room camera minutes, motion to adopt, Councillor Maslin, Councillor Studley. Thank you. All those in favor? Public hearing minutes from December 16th, motion to adopt. Councillor Thompson and somebody else.
I'll second.
Councillor Corlick, thank you. Yes, Councillor Corlick is on the phone here for anybody that's interested. We're all interested. I know, I didn't say that right. Okay, and the next items are the regular December 16th, regular meeting minutes, a motion to adopt. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Studley, and business arising, Councillor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. Last regular council meeting, we passed this inter-community business licensing document. I've been told that I was confused that we still have our own business licensing program of bylaw, and that's still being reviewed and going to come back at some time, is that...
Okay. And Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first two readings were only given to that bylaw. It wasn't passed, there's a public process that'll have to happen, and yes, we do have our own business license bylaws as well.
Thank you. Any further? No? Okay, we have passed that, and there's no business arising, no petitions and delegation. Down to councillor report. Who would like to start on that? Do we have a volunteer? Councillor Maslin does.
Yeah, yes, Your Worship. I was, I'm sorry, I was remiss, I didn't get my written one in, it must have slipped by me. My wife and I did enjoy the family Christmas at home this year. It was great to tour the grandchildren around all of our community offers in winter. We enjoyed visits to the Aquatic Center, the arena, touring our family under the town's Christmas lights. A big thank you to all those who tried to make Christmas, including the city, tried to make Christmas a special place. I also want to extend a big thank you to all those who are working so hard to keep our town open during the winter. We've seen the impact of winter really deeply these past two or three days. From shoveling snow to fixing pipes to keeping us warm, getting a city of 4,000 through a Canadian winter is not easy, and we salute you. I'd like to just set, might be a good time for a few New Year's resolutions. I don't know if I want to call them resolutions, but maybe mileposts for the coming year. I would like to, these are hopefully the best for the city, that we will put shovels in the ground towards flood mitigation, that we will put together a definite plan for the North Rocco relocation, and we will fill, mar the gaps in the city's housing spectrum. I personally am resolving to work hard to assist family support services and the advisory committee as they try to fill so many of our community's social needs. I also look forward to participating with Discover Grand Forks in the revitalization of our historic downtown core this year. Anyhow, Your Worship, that's my brief verbal report.
Thank you very much, councillor. And moving around, councillor Corlick, would you like to make a report of some kind here?
I do, haven't gotten anything to report, except that I'm just assisting the public work, they're doing, working hard and taking care of their trees and sidewalks. Not that I can avail myself of them, but it's appreciated. So, thank you all, and a Happy New Year to everybody. And I support Chris and his thoughts about what we should be doing in the coming years.
Councillor Krog is next, and...
Nothing at this time.
And moving around, councillor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just the one item that I've given council and staff a heads-up on, it's a notice of motion. So, Councillor Maslin and myself, as reported a few months back, I guess, were able to sit in on the AGM for the seniors society. During that meeting, there were a few requests, and I just want to formalize one that has to do with the snow plowing and possibly some sand to avoid slips. So, I'll put on a forward motion, hopefully we get a second one, and hopefully vote from there. So, my motion said that the city of Grand Forks will endeavor to assist the seniors society in snow removal and sand required at their new Veronica House for the 2020 season only for the safety of seniors group.
Councillor Maslin, would you second that?
Yes, certainly, Your Worship.
You were at the meeting?
Yes, and there was a request to... Are you going to talk about the other request too, councillor? Well, are there future?
I talked to staff both for authority, yes. So, yeah.
All right, on the table and seconded that we assist the seniors as we described, further discussion? Councillor Krog?
Yeah, just, I had received notice of the notice of motion and had some suggestions. It's not to provide snow removal service to that property. It is to endeavor, to see what we can do probably for bow is in the area and can we drop sand. Obviously worthwhile, we're talking footing, we're talking seniors, but we're talking also that we don't want to set any kind of precedent for city crews removing snow from private properties.
Yes.
Right? So, this would be a temporary thing.
Extraordinary.
Yeah, for this, this winter until they can get their arrangements maybe.
That would be my understanding as well. Councillor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's what I should have pointed out, is that, you know, this is a helping hand for a time being, probably no difference than in addition to the agenda here at 7500. Again, trying to deal with an issue to give the people some time to move forward. I think we have on our agenda here someplace where we've let the Frisbee Golf Group, Orbison Land, with $5,000 grant there, you know, we put money into Gallery 2, and we support other groups, is what I'm saying. So, I'm asking for council's support on this. Thanks.
Further? Anyone calling for the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Councillor Corlick.
Councillor Corlick, did you vote?
If I don't answer, I'm voting yes.
Okay. That's the rules as well. Thank you. All right, and moving to, do you have anything further?
Yes.
Councillor Thompson?
No report.
Councillor Studley?
Uh, nothing.
Thank you. Okay, Regional District, councillor Corlick? I'm going to just dwell on one issue for a moment here at the regional district level, and that's the transit system. Sitting in on budget discussions, they're preliminary, but it really looks like we're going to be asked for a substantial amount of increase to our contribution to the service even before we have the public hearings and everything else. I'm just letting you know in advance that it's an expectation of the rest of the boundary at this point, that we put a budget together and get it submitted. So, the issue here is that we need to basically look at that, and I really haven't even talked too much of it to Daniel yet or to Ron, but it's a matter of getting that money on the table so we can move to the next stage of planning with an intact budget. So, we may or may not end up with that once we've done our public consultation. The choices are going to be very clear. We're going to limit service, we're going to keep it the same, or we're going to make it better. And I think we've got some big decisions to make on that, this in terms of the priority for the boundary area. Those meetings will be coming up fairly soon orchestrated by the regional district, that we sit down with the people and talk about what their expectations are for future. We're also looking for a sponsor. We still have no sponsor, so they're going to go out to RFP again to look for someone to run this. The option is the city could run it directly, that is not unusual throughout the province. We can go to a private contractor, although that hasn't proved really too fruitful in many situations where the private contractor will probably look to cherry pick the things they can make the most money on. So, you know, this is all coming forward in just, in my part here, warning that this will be on the table, and I think an important issue. Councillor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is probably an opportune time to make sure that the community does know that there will be an open house on a proposed community center that Community Futures is working on with the regional district and the city. So, please attend and give your input. Thank you.
Yes, that's certainly a regional district initiative as well. All right, that is my report. Councillor?
Thank you, Your Worship. If the city were to operate this, would this be shared service through the regional district for funding?
That's what I understand. It wouldn't change to any great extent the contribution formula. It would just mean that we were the provider. So, councillor Corlick, did you have anything further on the regional district?
No, I'm not, I reported positively last time, and I'm nothing further, but yes, you're utterly correct on the transit, just like the emergency rush interns and how it's going to be distributed to our areas is going to be interesting from that.
All right, thank you very much. And a motion to, councillor?
Yes, Your Worship. I did notice that on the agenda, I think at the coming regional district meeting, there's going to be a presentation about emergency, the Emergency Management Act of the province, and the provinces are reaching out for feedback on emergency, that particular act, that it, and I believe that that feedback is due at the end of the month. So, I just, I don't know if you haven't encountered that, or if that's going to come up at your regional district level, but I only, you know, if you do get a chance to feedback, we talked about extensively about the inclusion of other emergencies besides flood, fire, drought. We've talked about extreme weather, including heat.
And drought.
And somebody talked about smoke. Yeah, councillor Johnson talked about smoke as being a real natural hazard.
I don't find that a risk.
That might warn an emergency response.
So, at the end of the meeting last week, there was discussion of the fact that this council had decided that they wanted both our staffs, regional and city, to work together on some leadership on the homeless issue. So, that was on the table to make sure that we're clear that we're partners with the regional district in moving forward, but it also is a chance for us to really talk about the very issue you're talking about, which is expanding the regional emergency management response to include extreme weather, which could be extreme drought, it could certainly be fire and smoke. So, I think we need to expand that regional approach that we take, and that was stressed at the table, and I believe there was good support for it.
I think it's called climate change.
I believe that's true, councillor.
Should be a mess according to the interweb.
Start it back.
Okay, you're drifting here. Can we have a motion to accept a regional district report? Councillor Krog, councillor Thompson, all those in favor? All right, get down to business here. The early budget approval, so the next item on the business here, we're looking at community plan and a real estate strategy. Is there a desire to make a presentation on this? Daniel?
I can quickly speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this afternoon, we postponed some workshops that would have ideally explained some of this a little bit more in terms of the importance of the city-owned real estate strategy as an example, and the OCP as they tie into so many of the things that we're working on, and with staff planning currently, a planning year here for 2020 instead of heavy new capital projects besides the DMAP. I did speak to some of the consultants after, I believe it was councillor Krog brought it up last time, to check into the feasibility regarding combining the two and having some opportunities to save some money. There would be, for sure, when holding open houses or any public engagement session, if we can do both at the same time, that is feasible to find some savings there. For the best way of utilizing the funds, it would be ideal if we can actually combine both items into a single budget, which would allow the most flexibility to utilize the funds. And I don't really plan on spending $250,000. I hope I can spend way less based on the other plans that we have seen out there for OCPs. It all depends on how detailed council wants to go.
And I see that we don't really have a recommendation in terms of a motion on this matter?
Yep, there is.
There is.
Where is it? Early budget approval?
Yeah.
Am I not bringing it up here?
It's great.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to turn, I don't see it on my computer.
Questions, Mayor?
Okay, councillor Zelinski?
Thank you. Seeing as those comments, and like you said, we did get our workshops done this afternoon, whether or not it'd be preferable to table this, because the real estate strategy concerns me. We have other programs that are being done right now, and I'm just wondering how that's going to fit together, whether or not if we wait a while, there's some savings and so on. So, I'll get some more information, and maybe tonight isn't the time.
Okay, so no motion on the floor. Can we discuss whether we deal with it now? Councillor?
Could I just recommend deferral instead of tabling or motion?
Okay, but at this point, do we want to put this off? We discussed it at this point. I'm not seeing, you know, putting it off, I think, is slowing down the process, which we said we try not to get it slowed down this whole matter. Councillor?
Yes, Your Worship, just a question through you to staff. But this is going to be done with contractors, I'm assuming. Is it possible that the same contractor could handle both?
That's what they're putting on potential, as a potential RFP.
Okay, so there would be...
And more explanation?
Yes, you got to turn your... Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes and no, we're still looking into all the details. We may be able to have, like, a specialist in real estate is maybe not the same specialist as would do an OCP. As we would post it, we would look for proposals, and maybe two companies could share resources and combine the items to save money through public engagement. But if that doesn't turn out to be valid proposals, then we would have to go the separate route, but maybe share the same location space for open houses at the same time. They are lengthy processes, and from the real estate side, the land acquisition program and all of that, that's where really the real estate piece matters, and the earlier we can start this, the better.
I see that as part of our commitment not to stand in the way. Councillor Zelinski?
Thank you. And I guess that's my point on the real estate trust strategy. So, the document that we have on the second page says that the real estate strategy will also help with in-kind support options, councillors considering for the buyout residence. And seeing as we have to go for RFP and do all these other things, I don't think that the in-kind stuff should wait until all that's done. We have a housing needs assessment being done for us by the RDKB right now. We've got a land inventory that Community Futures has on the books for us to do. So, again, if staff is going to give us some more information on these workshops on why it's important, great, but to spend 100 grand at this time when we have other programs going, I'd have to, if we're going to vote on this, I'd have to speak against that part.
Right. The real estate trust that we canceled today were the ones that would be the backup for this, and that was our decision, and the reason they were there was, I'm assuming, because there's some urgency to get on with this. So, I'm asking council again, do we want this to go forward? Is there any risk in giving this pre-budget approval to go ahead with these plans? Councillor Thompson?
I would ask what the ramifications would be if this were deferred to the end of the month.
It delays the project by two weeks. So, the OCP takes a year to 12 to 14, 15 months. It delays that. The real estate strategy, we're guessing right now it would take probably still three, four, five, six months to figure that one out. It delays it by two weeks. If council's willing to do that, no problem. Like, staff will support it.
I'm urging you to move this forward, but let's hear some more. Councillor Maslin?
Your Worship, I'm certainly, I see the inherent need for a real estate strategy as we are in an appraisal process right now, and part of that appraisal as well as voluntary buyout program is the offer of an in-kind. Council is now, now finds, council finds itself in the real estate business with buying and selling of land and homes. It's a tricky business. Obviously, the city hopes to benefit by it, that it retains citizens, grow options, and create something from the DMAP situation. So, I would be in favor, Your Worship, of starting the real estate strategy with some malarkey, although I can't see two weeks really competing it. I really would like to see the risk analysis stuff come, you know, get those presentations on the capital projects that we missed this afternoon. But I see that as a real inherent need for the community, and that we need to move on that. I do not, you know, I'm whining and sniveling about the OCP, you know, and the need for it, however, you know, I can't be persuaded yet for the need for that. So, that's my thinking on the two of them, Mayor. Thank you.
So, do we want to split these, or do we want to go with councillor Zelinski's suggestion that we defer?
Yes, just defer it all. I think that's the cleanest way to do it.
Do you want to put that on the table?
Yes, I would, if council, did you make a resolution to...
No, he just discussed it.
Yeah, I would defer this issue to the January 27th regular meeting, councillor.
Seconder for that, councillor Zelinski. No discussion, question, all those in favor? Okay, sorry to make more work, but we were tired today. Okay, moving forward. Down to bylaws, proposed zoning bylaw for 1711 77th Avenue, zoning one, zone one to zone two. The recommendation here is, I'm not reading this right. The council gives fourth reading to this? Is this fourth and final? Okay, can I have that motion?
We'll make that motion.
Councillor Corlick makes a motion, and seconded by councillor Studley. Question, comments? We've gone through the process, ready for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you, councillor Corlick. Moving down to the revisions of the utility billing. And we're being asked to look at council rescinding the third reading of the utility billing, and that council gives third reading to the utility billing as amended. That's what's in front of us. Can we have the first motion, councillor Zelinski?
Yeah, I'm applauding.
That is to rescind the third reading of the bylaw, seconder for that, councillor Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And a resolution to give third reading to the amended bylaw, that motion?
We'll make that motion.
Councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Studley. Discussion on that? Councillor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions as I went through here. We always need some updates to the fees and charges bylaws, I think we've mentioned that. I guess probably the biggest thing struck my eyes was the billing errors, 10.1A. The adjustment period is limited to the time that the current owner is on title, and so we don't care about renters. I guess is my question. How are we going to deal with a renter as opposed to just the owner? So, I don't know if it should be owner slash renter, or utility bill owner, or what. I would hate an owner to have a zone in the rental saying, "Who cares?", and all of a sudden, the power is cut off, or the water is cut off or something.
Any others with that? Or councillor?
I just wanted to ask a question. Do we still send a copy of the utility bill to the... Do we still send a copy of the utility bill to the property owner where the tenant is responsible for utilities?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do send copies of all the utility bills to the owners. And ultimately, the owner is responsible for the utility account, so it'll fall back on the owner if the tenant doesn't pay the utilities. But the reason for this is because, is for a change of ownership, not for a change of tenant. So that it only applies to the current owner, so any adjustments?
Comfortable with that?
I guess my comment was it's a billing adjustment. If the owner isn't actually the billing person, if it's a renter, we're actually billing the renter. And if it's in arrears, we're not talking to the renter, we're just talking to the owner. That's sort of what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Help us here, Counsel Krog.
Yeah, it's been that way for a fair amount of time. Back in the day, it was all that and a landlord would then either pay the utilities and that's included in the rent, right? So there are ways that they can go around it. But we did get hit more than a few times in the past with sketchy people that ran up the bills and took off. So as a municipality, we don't have that power to recoup from them. So that's why the owners are ultimately responsible, the property owner.
Counsel Thompson.
Okay, two things. The property owner is ultimately responsible because unpaid utility arrears are transferred to taxes. And so that is where the, that issue comes in. At one time, the city did disconnects, electrical disconnects for unpaid utilities. Is that still happening or is that taken out?
We disconnect.
Through Mayor, yes, we have, but it's very rare. Because we do have that ability to transfer the electrical arrears to taxes, so they should get covered that way.
No need to disconnect. Counsel Zelinski, then Counsel Moslin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the part that I was pointing to was not bill payments, it was just billing errors. So regardless of whose name is in the account, if it's a renter in the account and it's a billing error, we're still talking to the owner. But I'll let that one die. I guess that the only other thing that I saw or I didn't see in the termination of service is, again, with the hot, the cold topic of the day, is there's nothing in here that says we're not cutting off utilities at 10 below or there's nothing in here that says, you know, well, it says we're going to cut it off anytime and that concerns me.
Yeah, I'm comfortable we wouldn't, but, you know, we had that backup again of putting it on taxes, so why wouldn't we when it's a rare occurrence to start with at this time? You want to further?
Yeah, I can speak to that. We have encountered a situation where we have eventually cut off the electrical, but we haven't done it. So we're, but from a practical point of view, we follow what Fordus or other utilities do.
Counsel Moslin, you had your hand up earlier.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I guess this was a lot to go through. The first comment I have or question is, it says in our background statement on Agenda Page 44, it says this bylaw will need to be adopted at the same time as a new utility regulatory bylaws, which we have just deferred. So is it okay if we adopt this tonight?
Daniel will take that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can speak to the process. So this bylaw actually sat at third reading since, I think it was October, since before Ms. Rhodes went on holidays here. And so we've realized a couple errors, we fixed them. The other bylaws, we're waiting for them to be at third reading. And then when all of them are at third reading, electrical, water, sewer, and this one, we'll bring them all collectively to Counsel for fourth reading once everybody's happy with all the items.
Okay.
I hope that explains that process.
Yeah, so this is third reading, Counsel, that we're still, yeah.
Well, we rescinded it, now we're going to give it.
Yeah, we have read it as amended. Not meaning that it can still be amended more.
Okay.
Counsel Moslin.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. I guess, first off, I'd like to say that, you know, the version I've got with the tracking is, I was quite entertained over the very careful changing of capital U and capital S. You know, small caps, large caps for utility services really made me scratch my head, really, because I made it to the capital.
Yes, yes.
Well, it was a lawyer did it, right?
No, no, no. So to make life simple, if you look here on the screen, utility service is the definition. So we're trying to capitalize or italicize the particular words that directly reflect the item in the definition.
Okay, all right. That was just an aside, the caps. I do have a question about Section 11-2, which is again about termination. It said, notice a termination shall be provided, which shall include at least one of the following. Is it, and then there's four things there. But I'm just wondering if, would it be better if there was two instead of at least one of the following? We put two of the following? Whereas rather than just putting a warning letter in the mail and just assuming it got there, or not, that we would follow with a telephone call? Or rather than just leaving a tag on the door and walking away, you know, in so many words, I'm trying to assure that we've actually had contact with the customer before there's a disconnection. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Krog.
Yeah, when I, when I looked at it, I thought it was weird that at least one of the following, the first one that is automatic is the fact that a cutoff notice is being put on the invoicer or the bill, right? So that, I think, is automatic. And then we have one of the others, also a warning letter or a telephone call or a notice.
Are we suggesting we need changes in that wording?
I was just going to say scratch one and go to two, but I see the logic of Counsel Krog.
Counsel Zelinski.
Yeah, I guess the concern I had is I look at 11.1 and says that we can cut it off unpaid as of the payment due date. And then if we give him a call and leave something on the answering machine and we're there in two hours to cut it off because it's past the due date. So just, you know, clear timelines on when we're going to contact them, how much notice they're going to get. You know, the one underneath it says at least two working days prior to termination if a tag's left. It doesn't necessarily say that for the phone call, so, but again, whatever's operationally good, as long as you let the people know.
How often does this occur that we actually cut someone off, say, in the last year?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, like mentioned before, it's very rare and actually as a matter of practice, the accounts have usually been overdue for some period of time. And we have given a 30-day notice prior to these steps being taken.
So is this overkill on our part? It looks like they've got this pretty targeted in terms of being fair but still being firm. Counsel Krog.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's sort of where I was going. I thought, A, was that part? But if it's already been done, then all's we need is one of the other ones. The other thing too is back in the day, a tenant could be running up bills and we weren't even allowed to tell the property owner, right? Which is why we're here now, so that goes back, so that there's a heads up.
Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In case of terminating a, or disconnecting electrical service, for example, I was involved with a case a few years ago here. It took almost six months by the time we finally disconnected service and that was based all on legal advice. We don't just disconnect electrical service in the middle of winter because it's kind of seen as an essential service at that time. So there are steps we would follow, we would follow legal advice. It's good for us to have this in here as a bare minimum, but we will always go above and beyond bare minimum because.
Okay, Counsel, this is third reading on the table. Are you ready for this? Is there any appetite to keep going with the discussion and digging down into it? I don't see it. We have the motion on the table. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, and C, we're deferring, defer 11C, D, and E. So that covers all of those three items?
Yep.
Do we need a motion to defer that? We did it in the agenda, accepting the agenda as amended, so nothing required on that. Late items. Okay. Starting with 12A, the Officer Positions Establishment Bylaw 2062. And I don't have stuff I'll have to turn around for that. We're being asked to give first three readings to this bylaw. Comment, Counsel Zelinski?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Counsel Krog. Discussion? None? All those in favor? Carried.
There's a second bylaw that needs the same as the repeal bylaw? That's the second line underneath it?
The, that Counsel gives first three readings to the Officer Position, repeal Officer Position Bylaw 1623. So can I have a motion for that? Counsel Krog.
I'll make that.
Second, Counsel Thompson.
And quick discussion, shouldn't we have done the review?
Before we made the other motion?
Before we made the other motion.
Okay.
This is only up to third reading, so it doesn't matter. Fourth reading, I'm embarrassed.
You're right.
Okay.
All those in favor? Carried. Item number 12B, Discussion of 7500 Donaldson Drive. This is the document that was created on our directions with our CAO and support team and the lawyers. So you have it in front of you? It's on the screen. We're looking for a motion to adopt this. When you're ready?
Perhaps it'd be read out for the benefit of those watching?
Yes, it's hard to read from that.
Well, we're listening.
We're listening. We are listening. Could you go ahead, Counsel? Counsel Thompson's going to do that.
At the meeting of January 13th, 2020, Counsel discussed the use of 7500 Donaldson Drive for an extreme weather shelter. Boundary Family Services has stepped forward with funding by B.C. Housing to operate the extreme weather shelter at that location. Counsel remains of the view that the use of the site for an extreme weather shelter is not permitted under Ground Forks zoning bylaw number 2039. However, given the significant life safety concerns related to the extreme cold weather currently occurring and the fact that Boundary Family Services will be the service provider in association with B.C. Housing, the site is considered by them to be the preferable location for the extreme weather shelter. And the extreme weather shelter will close on March 31st, 2020. Counsel is prepared to suspend bylaw enforcement action until April 1st, 2020. However, should the operation of the extreme weather shelter create unresolvable community safety concerns prior to then, Counsel reevaluate whether bylaw enforcement action is appropriate?
Do you want to make that motion, Counsel?
Yes.
And a seconder for that, till we get it on the floor? Counsel Moslin. And discussion? Counsel Krog.
Just housekeeping before we begin discussion, that is not a good weather bylaw or Counsel reevaluate whether Counsel will reevaluate.
A spelling correction or a grammar correction on that? Thank you. Counsel Moslin.
Just a grammatical thing or tip, don't put however at the beginning of a sentence.
To teach her.
Then you're going to get the semicolon right, okay? So, I don't know.
Just take however.
Well, if true, that would do it. And make up the two sentences.
Another grammatical correction. And another minor correction. A major one. Somebody's on it?
No, speaking right to the resolution.
Go ahead.
So we had lengthy discussion over the last couple days on this. And I've already mentioned to my colleagues here that we still do not have operating guidelines. We do not know the opening times, closing times. Even though Boundary Family Services has stepped forward, their board has not approved their operating guidelines yet. And without those in hand, I cannot support this resolution.
Thank you. Further comment?
We're going to have another, are we going to recess this meeting?
I'll let everybody speak and then, you know, we'll have the conversation.
We have the motion on the floor.
I know. It can be deferred until, if we're going to be catering, we're recessing this meeting and reconvene tomorrow, then this can come back at that meeting.
Okay, I'm lost. Whoever planned a meeting tomorrow?
We read Daniel's email that he sent to us. We have an email from Daniel and that thinks is one of the recommendations.
Okay, and I'm not up to date on that email. I didn't take my computer with me between the breaks. Is that when it was sent out?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if everything goes as planned, Counsel can comment on the draft items that Boundary Family Services forwarded to us by 10, until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. By hopefully noon, they will have the latest draft version. Currently, they don't have a draft digital version. They're compiling it still with their latest edits and they would like to have Counsel's input as well in that. The latest version hopefully gets passed tomorrow night by the Boundary Family Services Board. And if Counsel would like to reconvene this meeting tomorrow for this particular decision once all these items have been collected and hopefully Counsel has the absolute latest version in hand, that is an option.
Well, I for one think that this will still be an incomplete document in terms of what I hear Boundary Family Services expecting to challenge at the B.C. Housing level. What I hear is that they are prepared at this point to look at the expectations of B.C. Housing and to try and fit that with the policy that they're developing. And so as an incomplete document, I'm again arguing that we really have no no's in this business and that that should be Boundary Family Services' responsibility to put that together and again, to share that with the community when appropriate. And we had a whole bunch of answers. Counsel Thompson, you being neglected now?
No, I'm not.
Counsel Krog, Moslin, Zelinski.
Yeah, I'm not happy. Last year, basically, was a crap fest. And here we are again at the 11th hour, being pushed into a corner and then being blamed for lack of action when it's not even our, in our purview. So, yeah, I was not happy when it hit the table. The only silver lining, if there is one, is that there is a provider that is willing to enforce rules, put in rules, enforce rules, and not basically kowtow to B.C. Housing. There's, just from discussions today with the provider, some of the things that would be coming up or there'd definitely be a form. be coming up or there'd definitely be a formal intake program. It won't be a drop-in center. It won't be a kitchen, an open kitchen to the community. Only registered people will be allowed. They are meeting to finalize this because I don't even know if all of the board has seen any of the rules. If, if the structure comes back and it sounds reasonable, then, then it should possibly proceed. If they come back and say, no, B.C. Housing says that these are the rules, then I'm not going to support anything in close that. I am kind of upset and pissed off that it's open, right? Before any of this was dealt with. And people, oh, we had to because the weather's closed, excuse me, since August and before August, since last March. This should have all been dealt with. I don't think that, that any, the litigation between the city and the building or a building owner won't be an issue, right? I don't think it's a good location. I rather see a motel program. B.C. Housing is not willing to do that. And the only other thing that I'll say right now till I see the outline and how it's going to be run is, I have said it and I think a lot of the residents have said, it wouldn't have been an issue if it was run properly. Not a free-for-all gong show, right? So if we believe that this provider with over 30 years' service in our community can do that, then that's a possibility. But I don't want to make that decision until I see the actual documentation from the provider.
Further? Counsel Maslin?
Yes. Your worship. We did get the draft program, a policy document that the Boundary Family Services Society is working on or working from, you know, which does outline various policies that Counsel Krog did talk about, admission, services, tracking. That all look very, that all looks very professional. I also know, as Counsel Krog has, that the service provider is a longtime service provider in our community and have proven themselves with an admirable track record for management and service in our community. They are worth our trust. They are, they are, the hope is, of course, that they are going to take this on, that it is going to be successful, that their, that their capacity is going to grow and be a more of a regional service for this situation, not just for the shelter, but for all the affordable housing and all the real, all the other housing from affordable to market, the spectrum, including, you know, having subsidized rental units within market housing, which is more the, which is a very common model, especially to the communities to the east of us. So I, you know, I understand what we'd like to see. I'm, at this point, your worship, having, knowing how much we've had to push to get, you know, the Social Services Advisory and everything to get Boundary Family Support Services to get to this point, I want to be able to reassure them that they have my, my trust and indeed the trust of Counsel to go forward and offer this service to our community. I do also want to point out again that the shelter, yes, there will be an impact in the immediate neighborhood, but there will be, also be an impact in the rest of the community. Our downtown core is suffering, loitering and security problems. This proposed shelter will hopefully mitigate. We are in a position to see what differences a shelter will have, a well-run shelter will have, in the next 10 weeks. Can we mitigate some of that downtown loitering? Can we mitigate impacts on the community with a well-run and disciplined program? Counselor, Mr. Pratt did speak about his experience with Beth and the deadlines and rules that they had there. And those are the ones that he really wants to go with and we should respect that. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I guess if, if, I thought, now, this, we could get the assurance, basically want the rules posted, right? We want the rules on the wall. If we saw the rules, we'd have that comfort, right? I'm hoping, if that's the case, then I'd be willing to recess and come back to it. If at the end of the day, we're going to quibble about the rules, well, no, we don't want that rule, we want this rule. Well, then I do find that we are suddenly trying to provide a social service, something we have tried not to do. We have time and time again said that it's not for us to run the service. We have sort of been put in this approval position. Okay. So I think we should approve it and let Boundary Family Support Services get on with providing the service and that we should monitor it carefully. And if it becomes, as the statement says, a safety concern to the community, then we still have the power to end the, to end the program. Anyhow, your worship, so I, we're not talking about a recess or a referral right now, so I'm just speaking in favor of the motion, which is this document, I'm assuming, that's the motion? I'm not sure what we're actually passing here.
Counsel, I mean Counsel. Daniel?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this would be a letter that we would be, this is a draft of the letter that we would be sending out, or at least a big chunk of the letter, that we would be sending out to the individual society or the, or B.C. Housing to ensure that the funding is supported.
Right, so this is to trigger the funding?
Yeah.
Exactly. Counsel Krog? Counsel Zalinski?
Thank you. So a few months back, this table passed a resolution that said, we believe other agencies had a play in this. We passed that resolution because it is thought at this table or is mentioned that we wanted more control other than land use zoning. We, so that was one of the issues is, passing that resolution committing that we had a role to play in this other than land use, to me, and was mentioned, I think at the time, was to make sure that we had operating guidelines in place that Counsel approved. The motion this morning said, and we shall monitor, without the rules, without anything in front of us, I don't know what we're going to monitor. What is to show us that it's a success or it's not. So...
And I thought Counsel Maslin's response to that was very well said. You mentioned, you know, feedback from the DBA, who's hanging around in stores, who's at Conco and won't leave, who's at the library and won't leave, all of those indicators of success. Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, just see again, disagreeing. I don't want any impact to the neighborhood. I'm not go, oh, well, there'll be an impact on the neighborhood. The only way I'll lie into any of this is with the assumption there'll be no impact to the neighborhood. And we can't say that there won't be an impact until we see what the criteria and the rules are. I expect a lockdown, or, okay, bad word, but that, no, it's not come and go at whatever time of the night. Once you're, you've done your intake at 8:00 or whatever, it's, nobody just shows up, nobody, you know what I mean? Just that it's not the same crap that happened last year. So like I said, someone said, like, if it's properly run, it'll work. So in order to be properly run, we need to see what the criteria and the rules are. And that's why I wanted anything in there that we can pull the plug.
Counsel Thompson?
I hear your concerns. However, I think that Mr. Pratt also heard loud and clear the expectations of Counsel with respect to hours of operation, monitoring. And his responses to, that I heard, gave me comfort that it will be a well-run facility and that there will be rules and regulations. I don't want to get into the position of micromanaging another organization such as Boundary Family Services. They have their board of directors that are well-known citizens of our community as well. In addition, Mr. Pratt said that if B.C. Housing will not abide by what Boundary Family Services is willing to provide, there will not be a shelter. They will not, they will not operate it and that facility would be closed. So I think this, this is intended to be a letter of comfort to Boundary Family Services from the City of Grand Forks of what, what we are proposing to do. And to defer this and keep tabling it and putting it off, it's not going to benefit anybody, least of all those people that are at risk.
Counsel Krog first, Counsel Zalinski?
Yes, and I heard what Mr. Pratt was saying and the ideas of how it would run, that type of thing, and it sounds reasonable. Problem is, Mr. Pratt said it here, and he's meeting with his board to discuss the exact same thing and to show them our expectations as well. And that's why this is, we've been given kind of an outline and if we have any comments, we forward it to them by 10:00 a.m. so that they can get it to their board to come back. So totally disagree with that deferral is a bad thing. In this case, it's probably the only reasonable expectation. So even though there's a motion on the table, I will make a referral motion to...
Referral?
Deferral. Referral. I'm referring it, you may defer it. To tomorrow, once we have that information and rules from, from the provider.
A second for that, deferral. Question? You wish to defer this? All those in favor?
Just a minute, to when? We have to, we should have a...
Deferal to tomorrow.
To tomorrow after their board. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I've never had to do it this way yet, but we've had, in the past, from my knowledge, we had once an incident where we reconvened a meeting later on after another meeting. So in my opinion, the best would be to potentially move the decision of this item to later on, maybe hear the public, finish this meeting kind of off, but then reconvene, not, don't adjourn the meeting fully. Simply recess the meeting and reconvene tomorrow evening at like 7:00 p.m. or something like that.
I'm available, I have a regional district meeting.
Okay, or Wednesday morning or something like that. Like it's, it's not ideal, I understand this, for everybody involved. And this would, maybe Wednesday morning would work better for Mr. Pratt's group as well because they're only meeting tomorrow night, but I believe by tomorrow night, we would have potentially an answer. But if you can't be here, Mr. Mayor, I think...
And my concern with delaying this at this point is clearly that, that again, we're not putting this new provider in a role where he can take that kind of leadership role that we need there now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, we do not have a provider because there is no agreement with B.C. Housing. So that's a fact. The other fact is, we were told, even though Darren himself and his group has faith from people around here, Boundary Family Services has not run a shelter of any sort. The other point is, I don't think it's a very big stretch to treat Mr. Pratt and his service any different than anybody else. As a service provider, he should be able to stand up in a public meeting here and tell us what the service is and then tell Counsel and the public what the rules are going to be in and sell that to the community. Because without that explanation of what the service is, you know, even if the document isn't in front of us, they, he should be able to tell not only what his board has approved, but how the service will be run and some of the checks and balances that they plan to put in.
We're debating a deferral.
Well, we're not actually because we've decided that Daniel suggested that we reconvene this meeting tomorrow, so we're not debating a deferral.
Tell, remove the deferral motion.
Okay. So we'll recess this meeting to...
After.
That's what's suggested. I've...
It's, it's an option.
So I refer this item to the end of the meeting after questions from the public and media, just prior to adjournment.
So we'll hear from the public and adjourn?
No, not today. But do we have to, do we have to make a motion with respect to our procedural bylaw and the agendas that are, not that I'm opposed to this at all, I want this to happen, but I don't want it challenged by anybody outside of it.
So, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but what, there's two options for Counsel. Counsel can adjourn this meeting today and we set up a new special regular meeting of Counsel on another date and time, or Counsel can keep this meeting open, basically don't adjourn it, simply recess it and reconvene at a certain date and time. That's allowed to then reconvene, so do it one way or the other, it doesn't matter. The only issue is for posting a new meeting, we usually give at least 24 hours notice. And so if it happens tomorrow night at 7:00, we're not going to make that 24-hour...
Yes.
Norm? I would like to hear from the public here that's here tonight.
Yes.
And I'm just saying that on our agenda, in the procedural bylaw that sets up the agenda criteria, that is the last item on the agenda. So is there a resolution that we can bring forward to allow the public to speak that requires a unanimous decision of all of Counsel, I think?
Yes.
And I would like to, I'll put that...
Okay.
Okay, well, we've got a motion on the floor. So we can deal with that one, then I will put the other resolution forward.
Okay. Yeah, what I was trying to say is the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Before that is questions from the media and public. So I would like to recess this meeting to Wednesday morning after, just after the public and... and media questions, and just before adjournment is what I was trying to get to.
Can I suggest that we do it tomorrow morning?
They won't have met, and we won't have any of the stuff that they're asking.
It puts off Boundary Family taking over this service for another two or three days.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
So, where are we with the motion, sir?
Counselor Moslin.
I'm not sure, was the, this was a motion to send this letter? I didn't get the action that was involved in the motion. Are we approving it?
Well, it's not the letter, they're going to use this content to compose a letter to Boundary Family and to the owner of the property and to...
Well, I really, I'm beginning to see this as two separate issues, you know, despite, we could send a letter...
And still meet...
And still meet to review the rules.
Yes, we could.
You know, that way, we don't, we're not impeding anybody by holding up...
Triggering the finances that would go to Boundary Family so they can get on with this.
Well, they would, they would see that we were, I hate not to send this at this point, even though it's got some dramatical problems. I would, because it does provide the letter a comfort, does provide comfort to Boundary Family Services that we are, you know, going to, willing to suspend. So, again, I'm really not too sure what the motion was. Were we moving to approve this letter? Were we moving to send this letter?
Since, you know, we took part in composing some of these things today, my feeling is that this is a letter to trigger the funding primarily so that Boundary Family Services can get on with it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Anyhow, so, Your Worship, maybe perhaps we could just approve the letter, not adjourn the meeting, and then if you're back, we are expected, we had a lengthy document on, that Mr. Pratt did forward to us, on shelter policies and procedures, which, you know, included everything from shelter, from admission all the way through to exit. You know, it's quite detailed, and they would like our suggestions. I guess our primary suggestion is put the rules on the wall.
Counselor has the floor, please.
Well, that's basically it, Your Worship. We can do that after we send, if that indeed was a motion.
So, that's...
To qualify, I would say, is that I'm speaking in favor of sending this letter to Boundary Family Support Services tonight. So that they tomorrow know that they've got this in hand. They'll take, also take this, plus our suggestions for rules, and take that to their board and be able to come back to us by Wednesday morning with the rules that are going to go on the wall.
I'd like to look back and see what the resolution was.
I'd like to go back to who made the motion, because I believe that basically you're rounding out what we're seeing in front of us in terms of this being the trigger to get funding moving.
Yeah, I think he did the motion.
No, I think I did.
What did you?
Yeah.
And who seconded it?
But I'd like to know what I said.
Was it me?
Okay, so it is a motion on the floor?
Yeah, what, what is it?
To approve this wording?
Did I not make a motion?
You made it, I said it.
Can we check and see who made the motion?
No.
I believe Counselor Thompson simply read the letter.
And then she agreed to make the motion.
Yeah, but... Someone seconded it, there was a second. Referral and all that stuff.
Kathy Wolfert?
What am I saying? It sounds so muddled and confusing, Mr. Thompson.
Tagurney. Counselor Crogg, then Counselor Zelinski.
A comfort letter to...
BC Housing.
Provider, a comfort letter to BC Housing. Now, we need a comfort letter to the residents of this community. And as for posting rules on the wall, that's a no-brainer, and that's not what we're asking. We want to see what the rules are going to be, what the hours are going to be, how it's going to be structured, how is this designed to protect the neighborhood and the area from any distress caused by or predestined.
Counselor Zelinski, then Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, just like bullets are on this table, nothing's guaranteed until it's done. So, once this letter goes out and they've got a blanket, go ahead and do it. Well, it says, it is, it says, we're not going to enforce the bylaws, is what it says. And we don't have any operation things, as Counselor Crogg has said. We don't have any idea what the operations will be, and, yeah, we don't do that to anybody else. We even put budget numbers.
Counselor Crogg, you've spoken quite a bit, I think Counselor Thompson had her hand up.
And then can I speak after?
You may.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that in order for Boundary Family Services to obtain funding for the shelter, the city has to approve the provider. You know, and that's my understanding. And without the council saying we support the provider of this proposed service, it's all for naught. Now, maybe our, I can see, our interim CEO could speak to that, because he used to work for BC Housing in LA some days.
Don't say that.
No, 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 I never did.
Oh, I did, oh, I'm sorry, I take that back.
Reputations are ruined.
Yes, I'm sorry. You've worked with BC Housing, thank you.
Ron, would you like to comment on this?
Mr. Dinsdale.
Yes.
For BC Housing. Your Worship, I think the important thing for BC Housing and the provider is that, you know, council doesn't shut them down, obviously, for no particular reason. I think everybody understands that council will retain the right, that if there's a problem and the service provider isn't providing the service to a level that council is comfortable with, given complaints and all those types of things that are not resolved, that, yes, then you could shut them down. But it's not going to be shut down on whim. And I think that's what they're looking for. The service provider is, again, is, the council's own discussed criteria were things like a service provider that they could count on, that they, they believe that was one that they could trust to try to carry this out. And so, you know, I think that particular one is one that council doesn't have to approve per se. Given the timeline, I think, I think it is important that, that Boundary Family Services be the people providing the service, if there's a service. I'd be very uncomfortable if they weren't providing the service and it was just sort of happening. I don't think anybody really wants to see that. So, may I suggest, Your Worship, the one thing that council may want to consider to just try to move it through is that, you know, council forward this with an addendum that says, in principle, subject to review of the policies as provided, as finally approved. And that way, they're, they can have their meeting, we know their meeting. So, this is the Boundary Family Services choosing not to provide it. They're formulating these things as we speak, their board hasn't seen it. And so, that at least triggers that, if all things are equal and we do like your policies, then we're going to be okay with this, as opposed to kicking the can down the road and not ever resolving it. And so, if council was comfortable, that would at least provide the ability to say, all things being equal, when we look at those policies, we heard a lot of things today that we agreed with, let's see it in writing as a policy, as approved by your board. And then there's some finality. And at that point in time, if in fact the board doesn't meet your needs, then at least you have that ability to say, I'm sorry. And just as BC, Boundary Family Services may still say to BC Housing, this is how we want to operate in this community, because we know what the expectations are. And if you don't let us do it, we're backing out too. So, everybody has a back out, should it not be in a way that we're all comfortable with.
So, I see that this would include this verbiage that we're looking at here to approve, but would also be a letter that covered the bigger picture, as we were told, that we're in this process of a final approval of the policies. If we don't like them, then we won't be happy with the deal. So, I think, you know, the encouragement here is to get this trigger to go, and then for us to move forward with analyzing the results of discussions around policy. Counselor Corlick, I'm sorry, you're next.
Okay, you're on.
I'm on, I'm done for now.
I saw your hand up.
Thank you, I've been waiting it for a while. But I just want to say that, one, I was not happy about last night's opening, fine. Two, I've been listening to everybody and their discussion, and I do, and I have read through everything that Boundary Family Services sent. And I believe that they want our input before the final things are done. And I agree with the acting CAO about getting this agreement or this plan in place so that we can go forward when knowing that we can say, yes, that's great, or no, we need this done as well. And then, then maybe we can all rest, we need to see those rules, we need to see the regulations. That way, we can feel good with what we're making a decision on, whether it's definitely sounding yes or not. So, I think we do need to see those rules and regulations as well. They're waiting for our input on this, what we got today. So, that we have to have to buy down to them by 10:00 tomorrow morning. Then we can go forward after that. Then let's say that, let's reconvene this meeting. It won't, shouldn't take long at that point to say, yes, we do agree, and we're very pleased that things are going as they are, and we have hope for the future. So, let's, let's see what they have to say, let's come up with their final, their final rules or regulations, and what they've posted everywhere for everyone to see, that's wonderful. But I think we need to do that and know, and feel comfortable in ourselves. Because we have people that are going to be all over us if we don't give this our due attention.
So, I'm also seeing that, that these policies, rules and regulations should be something that goes by the Grand Forks Social Services Group.
It's on the agenda for Wednesday.
Right, for Wednesday. So, again, on the table is a motion to accept this basic wording as the core content of a letter that would go out, that would trigger the funding, but would not preclude our involvement ongoing in the design and development of these policies.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, a couple of things. First of all, we're talking timeline here, right? So, for these documents, for Darren to make a presentation to public, he's going to be meeting with his board Tuesday night, and hopefully they finalize things. The Social Services Group will see it Wednesday, is my understanding. And so, we can deal with it Wednesday afternoon with all that input. So, we're talking less than 48 hours. If, if there is a problem and we have an issue, we've got to give 24 hours notice of a meeting. We have to have the discussion, and we're a lot longer trying to backtrack on this than the 48 hours that if we put it out at the front end of the project will do. There is still a possibility, even once we say, yes, Darren knows about that great, great rules, yeah, that sounds like a good operation plan. And BC Housing says, no, we're not funding. And now what do we do if we have people in the building illegally and no provider?
Counselor Crogg.
Yeah, similar to what Counselor Zelinski's thought process or train. It triggers funding, and it's been set, oh, so that FIS can take it over, blah, blah, blah. It was opened by a group. And the fact that they now opened it early and they want FIS to take it over as far as money and funding and stuff goes, doesn't matter. They're the ones that did whatever the hell they did. And if it's going to cost them money because it's not going to be dealt with till Wednesday afternoon, that is none of our concern. Right? So, I want to see, I'm not agreeing to this, I'm not agreeing to that with the caveat that, you know, that the CAO said, no, I want to see the rules, and I would like Mr. Pratt to fill us in in a public meeting about how those rules are going to work, how he thinks this is going to work, and then I'll make a decision.
Counselor Zelinski.
One last comment is, one thing I'm really looking forward to from Darren, Darren's presentation, is what they think their good neighborhood policy is and how they're going to deal with the neighborhood out there.
That is also on the agenda for Wednesday.
Yeah? So, let's get those meetings going and bring the information back, and we can be here with less than 48 hours.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for this wording to be included in a letter that would trigger the funding so that we can go ahead with Boundary Family Services moving as quickly as possible into the control of that building. It looks like Darren would need a couple of days to start with to be able to pull the appropriate management staff together for it. But I'm going to support it because I don't want this delayed a minute longer than necessary at this point. Are we ready for the question? Have you talked yourself through this?
What is the question?
This is, this wording that's up on the, on the board?
No, isn't there...
Without any caveat or anything?
No, is there not a resolution to defer this issue?
Now, remember, we decided...
Yeah, we wanted to recess it instead of not.
It's just a procedure thing, so it's not a motion at this time of the day. It's my understanding. So, all we have is these words, are we sending them forward?
That's right, that we use these words to trigger the funding so that we can make this happen. Are you ready for the question? Counselor Thompson.
My concern is that if this fails...
And it will.
That it can't be brought back unless you bring it back with the unanimous consent of council, is my understanding.
I can bring it back to the mayor for a period of time, but...
So, I, well, I would prefer not to have to, to be able to support sending this out now. I think that, I think that we might be wise to have our staff, Daniel, contact Darren, explain the circumstances so that he can explain to his board what is required of our council. And if we could reconvene this meeting on Wednesday, say, at 4:00, because the setting meeting ends at 3:15, would that work with management?
I won't be there.
On Wednesday?
Wednesday is the regional district meeting at 1:00.
I thought that was Tu- tomorrow?
No, Wednesday. Yeah, I could meet tomorrow, as I said, tomorrow morning, and nobody said, yes, we wouldn't have Darren's involvement.
Oh, yeah, I thought you said tour afternoon was...
Yeah.
What time would you get back from your regional meeting?
They've changed their dates now, so the meeting doesn't start till 1:00. They've changed them to daylight hours.
And is it in-town meeting?
It's in-trail.
In-trail. I'm okay with him not being here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. The easiest way, Counselor Thompson, would be to just remove your motion.
I was drawn by motion.
Okay. And Counselor Moslin is okay with that as the secondor. He can remake a motion here if you so desire, but...
Yeah, Your Worship, I, I'm really worried that we are moving from supporting to impeding. Nonetheless, I have been patient, and I will continue to be patient, because this is difficult. I do want to be able to, at the end of the day... I do wanna be able, at the end of the day, to provide comfort to not just council, but to the community. Frankly, I'm confident that we are going to get that comfort. Nonetheless, your worship, I will agree to the withdrawal of the motion, and I'm hoping that there will be an expedient exchange. You know, I'm gonna go home, spend the night going through the document coming out with suggestions. Is that your homework too, Counselor? Anyhow, and, uh, uh, hope that we can meet. Is there any possibility, Mayor, that we can meet tomorrow night? Would it work tomorrow night?
Work for me.
Well, that's when the--
Yeah, but at this point, at this point, Counselor, you know, I have to weigh what's important here. I would certainly, I would not see this next wrap-up event. It's only gonna have one item on it, and we're not gonna talk a lengthy--
We're not gonna have the information that is required, because they're not meeting until tomorrow night.
SAG is, SAG is meeting Wednesday, so Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday night.
As far as, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as far as I understand it, with Boundary Family Services, they may be able to meet electronically if the board desires to do so. It's up to them, so I believe Mr. Pratt would like to get this copy out to them by noon tomorrow, so hopefully by a certain time in the evening, everybody would have replied if it's an email meeting. If it's not, and they're meeting in person, I don't know the timelines, and I can't speak to when they would be finished, and we have confirmation that that would be the accepted ones.
Mr. Mayor, if we called a brief recess, would you be able to contact Mr. Pratt to inquire? Would that be inappropriate?
I can try. He lives up to North Fork, so it's a little challenging, but I do--
I suppose, or something.
And bombing.
We're not gonna deal with this matter because there's no motion on the table. So can we move down the agenda?
To questions and comments--
That's right.
--of the gallery and the media.
We have questions and comments from the media, so raise your hand if you wish. Yes, please, now.
I have a question from part two of your agenda tonight. Gloria Cooper, sorry, on page 64, the fees and charges sections under the water regulation by law number 2065.
That's table.
It's, was table?
It was deferred.
It was deferred, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can I raise that?
Yeah, what is your question, Gloria?
Okay, might as well, if you would care to. It says, number 33 says, "The city may charge a fee to any property adjacent, adjacent to the water system that can be serviced regardless of the existence of a water service." So you're saying you can charge a service for water against any property that's, like, not being used? What is, can you--
Counselor Thompson.
If, if, memory serves me, there were some properties within the city that had the water service going by, but were not using it, but had their own well. However, the service was there, and they could hook up to it. So that was, that was the intent, well, that's, come back to yours, but it's, it's, that's when that came into effect.
It sounds like the city may charge a fee to any property that can be serviced regardless whether we're using it or not, and I question that.
Counselor Cor.
Yeah, my understanding was, yeah, anytime, it's like sewer. I could have sewer going past my house, and the expectation is I hook up to it. If for some strange reason I wanna keep a septic thing, there's still gonna be a charge, because that's what it costs to get the service to go down there. Now, my understanding it was in properties that were inhabited, not vacant lots.
So it's not for vacant lots, isn't it?
Uh, clarification through him.
Should've been here. Side by--
Through the mayor. I'm gonna, gonna, I reckon we have to check into that and see whether or not, I'm not sure if vacant lots are charged a fee, but the fee is there because exactly as Counselor Cog said, the service has been paid for, and the service is going past that particular lot, and there is a cost to replacing that infrastructure down the road, and whether or not you choose to attach to it or not, there still is that cost of that piece of infrastructure going across your, your piece of property. And so it's the cost of operations and maintenance and replacement of that infrastructure at its end of life.
I've remitted that way back. Counselor Thompson.
I would just suggest that there wouldn't be a building permit issued to vacant property unless they were hooked up to the, to the services. So as I remember, we didn't charge on, on vacant properties.
Gloria, you had a comeback.
Well, if you have a vacant property, that's a vacant property, but if you choose to use that property, build on it and such, then you put your services in, you hook up and pay for the water service, like we have done in the past. But an unused lot that you happen to own shouldn't incur water charges, if you think.
Okay. You good with that?
Well, is that the case?
Well, we're looking at it, and seeing whether we agree, but you raised this as an issue, expecting it will give it some thought.
I hope you, I hope you don't, don't go in that direction.
Don't go that. It seems like we've always done it that way, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
Further from the gallery.
You got any?
Yeah, you go ahead.
I got it. Pamela Kennedy, Grand Forks taxpayer. Thank you. Anyways, I wanna thank you very much for, Christine, for bringing me out and asking how I feel. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. The, I have, I have come to a decision, not, I mean, not that my input matters, Mr. Mayor, but I have made the decision that I will be somewhat lenient in my ways if there is rules. So thank you very much, Ms. Cog, Ms. Rod, that the rules be placed before, thank you, to be done correctly, so we can look after these individualies, individuals correctly would be nice for once. And furthermore, as it goes with the friendly neighbor agreement, is there gonna be community involvement on that? I would really like to know that. And in saying that, Mr. Mayor, what does appropriate timing mean to you? Because I'm sure what I get from you to me is a whole different thing, so I need clarification. Actually, I think the community needs clarification, clarification on that.
Mr. Pratt, today speaking on behalf of Boundary Family Services, made a point of identifying the importance of beginning that process with the community as quickly as possible, even though this was dumped on our lap at the last minute again. We have a commitment, and so does Boundary Family, to go ahead with whatever community contact we can make at this point.
So therefore, I will give my trust to BFSS as long as the rules are in place, and appropriate timing is defined, because the way it was before, it was three months down the road before I was even spoken to. So, did you wanna ask me a question, Ron?
No, I was just asking the mayor's permission to add to the comments.
Go ahead.
So one thing that we have discussed here too, that I think plays into this, is to make sure that within our bylaws, that we actually get a penalty in place for any bylaw infraction over, after notice. So we are working on that too, that where there really wasn't any penalty for not following the bylaws, so we're trying to update our fees and charges bylaws to make sure that there's an actual penalty for not following. So that's another enhancement that we're trying to do.
Thank you.
So furthermore, being in this room today, I, as a taxpayer of Grand Forks, would like to know if my taxpaying money pays for Les Johnson to be a council member. Mr. Moslin called him a counselor today, so I really would like clarification. Please tell me, Mr. Mayor, is Les Johnson a counselor? Because he was addressed as counselor tonight.
You know, I think he should have an opportunity to speak on his own behalf.
Oh, please, no. No, he didn't, he said today that Ann was not allowed to speak.
This is walking into the problem, so, no, I don't think it's appropriate at this point, and the question that you asked is, no, he does not.
Thank you.
He does not.
I appreciate that.
He has not paid anything.
Furthermore--
Matter of fact, he was made volunteer of the year one year because of this massive amount of hours of service. He has filmed, I think, over 400--
No, 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 that's sidewalling it, no, no. Is he or is he not?
A counselor? You know he's not.
Mr. Moslin was not in the right to call him a counselor today.
Why are you playing that game? You know if it was a slip of the tongue, he's not a counselor.
No, it's not a slip of the tongue.
Oh, you think that by saying it, he becomes--
I wanted clarification, and I will get it.
Well, you have it now, Ms. K.
Thank you. I have another question, which I kind of forgot, it's gonna come back here. Oh, is the chamber room, city council chamber rooms, an area for slandering other groups? So I could slander DBA, or, or down, a business down, business association group, the Boundary Horse Association, whatever I chose to, can I?
You don't have my permission to slander anyone.
No. How come you allow Les Johnson to slander C4 representatives?
Can I get a further answer to this line of questioning?
No, because I just heard on the radio today, I was in first state class.
Please, that's enough. You're using this forum to attack somebody who's standing behind you, extremely inappropriate. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Not.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We're assessing.
And what exactly are you intending to do here? Do you want further comment from this lady, who at this point in time is slandering?
No, no, Counsel--
I'm not slandering, it was on video.
That was not Counselor Cog's intent at all. I think he's--
We're recessing this--
We're trying to give you--
Oh, no.
--chairs on our procedure.
Oh, I see, okay, I get the, I get the plan. We're recessing till tomorrow--
Till adjourned.
Till Wednesday.
Oh, I almost adjourned, okay.
Okay.
And you know what? I don't need a secondor for a recess, do you know that?
True, but I think you do allow Les a chance to--
Well, actually, you just reminded me, this is not turning into a debate on the floor, so I'm not gonna ask him anymore. I think that you would like when you challenged me.
So are we finishing with questions from the gallery?
Yeah.
Are we finishing with gallery?
Are we finished with questions from the gallery?
Well, no, let's, let's hear if there's any other gallery people here that would like to say something other than attacking Les. Oh, darn it. Ms. Tom.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Based on your actions over the last 24 hours, your inability to listen to the council of your counselors, you're opening up a business that is in litigation with the city over bylaws. I'd like to know if this is not a direct, non-procurety conflict of interest, and why you are not recusing yourself from all debate and discussion and voting on the whole issue.
I don't see myself in a conflict of interest, thank you very much. Further comment from the gallery?
Does anybody else feel like you're in a conflicted interest? I think the council has the right to speak.
You know, the conflict of interest is to be called by the person who is in it, and I feel no conflict of interest in this situation.
I'd just like to say that that is not how the community of Grand Forks feels, the majority of them feel you're in a total conflict of interest, and are requesting that you actually step down from your office.
Okay, thank you very much for that suggestion. And Angela, you have your hand up.
Hey, you. I do wanna say that in the earlier meeting, Counselor Zelinski was trying to voice that you guys did act in good faith, and when you approved the, the opening of the shelter last year, and I just wanna acknowledge that, and that I'm thankful that you did, and we don't need to get into why it was, you know, extended, but there were, there were reasons why, and benefits to the community by doing so. But I do just wanna acknowledge that I do get that you are hesitant, because you have already said yes, and then it wasn't kept to the agreement at, at that time. And so I do wanna acknowledge that part of things. You guys have also said that you wanted to have a provider that you, that you trust, that you feel would run it properly and, and in a good way. And I don't recall you ever saying that you wanted to set out the rules, or wanted to determine how it was run, but that you did want someone that you felt would be able to do it in a good way. And as far as I, as I hear things, is that all of you seem to basically agree that Boundary Family Services could do that. And I can't speak to what rules that they're, they're planning to put in, or, or anything. I do wanna say that even, even if they were declined from B.C. Housing to say, we won't allow you to run it, given the parameters that you're, you want to put in place, for whatever reasons, you know, everyone has, has certain rights, and there could be reasons why B.C. Housing has things set up the way they do. So in respect, in the off chance that B.C. Housing has says, no, we cannot do it that way, and, you know, I do understand that FIS has basically said that if, if they don't agree to those rules and, and policies that they wanna set out, that they won't do it. My point is, is that it has, in these discussions, we have spoken before about if there was a provider that people believed in, if they had a location which was suitable, and I know that people aren't happy, or some people are not happy in particular with, with that location, although it was brought up by city staff as well, as one of the most ideal locations. We should remember that. Okay? And it is really one of the only places available. And I do wanna just say that we have said before that if there was a good provider, if there was a, a place for them to do that, the community to get behind them, people would, would support them. People would like to see that these individuals have a safe, warm place to be. So I, I want to remind you about that aspect of things, like even if it isn't according to, to how things are set up right now, but if it was just on the off chance that it was FIS with B.C. Housing rules and everything, it could be anywhere, it could be any provider, if people would help and support them, it could be a success. And so I just wanna put that out there, and I would also like to say that, you know, I, I think part of the reason why Darren wasn't here to, to say, this is the rules, everyone, that we're, we're wanting to put out there and everything else, is because they're not at that point where they can do that yet. I have voiced this before privately, but people do feel reluctant to come in to try to speak with council for different reasons, and the, everyone, everyone acknowledges the concerns that the, the citizens have, the different residents in the area have. Like, we, we are all very aware of that, you know, and the individuals that would be using these services are also aware of it. And so if we can remember that part of things as well, I do wanna say back to why some people don't wanna come in necessarily to engage in these kind of conversations. I do want to say back to why some people don't want to come in necessarily to engage in these kind of conversations. If people show support or try to advocate on behalf of the people that need these services, they are oftentimes basically bombarded by different individuals and treated very poorly. And so, you know...
All right, and I see Mr. Johnson has his hand up.
Normally, I'm just a voice, so I'm gonna turn the camera on me so the people at home can hear me and see me, because I think it's important. After what I just heard and the small conversation earlier on with Ms. Palmer, it's pretty clear that neither of them know what the laws' meaning of libel and slander are. Maybe somebody should give them a little bit of education before they keep saying things and find somebody who actually has the financial wherewithal to sic a lawyer on them, because I don't. The city pays me no money. I never, I have never called myself a counselor or the eighth unelected member of council, though apparently that is a moniker which people who do not like me have tarred me with. Now, slander. Okay, so I'll make an official announcement right now. Council knows about this, or most of council anyways, but last week I sent a letter off to the mayor. I will no longer be doing this live streaming. The reason I'm not gonna be doing this anymore is sitting right over there, right behind the camera. Because, wait, 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 wait. I just have to point out...
In terms of this debate that's going on?
No, I just have to point out that before my character is completely assassinated and before people are incited to, I don't know, spread drug paraphernalia across my driveway the way that they did to the mayor, I'm bowing out. I don't make any money off of this. I spend hundreds of hours a year. I spend thousands of dollars out of my own pocket for this. And, hey, this is the way you get treated, when you stand up. The Japanese have a saying, "The nail that sticks up gets pounded down."
Don't stop.
Pound, 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 that's it.
So we cut it off here. Okay. Zelinsky has reminded me that this was not on the agenda, so I will pass that on. All right, folks, have he said it? Counselor Crog, you're not on the agenda. Do we have anything from the media?
Couple things. Firstly, what is the status of that litigation? Because the petition was filed in September, and the city, under that, was supposed to reply within 21 days, and never did. So is it, like, is it ongoing or is it on hold? Because they've been...
Ken, you may wish to speak to this, or Ron? Take it away, Ron.
At this point, it's just being held in the base as a pending, so it's up there. Has been withdrawn, but it's not, nothing else has happened with it.
Right. Actively pursuing it at this point?
At this point, yeah.
Okay.
Couple things. It wasn't on the agenda, so I'll ask Daniel later.
You can ask it after the meeting.
Perfect. In the wording there, it says, "Unresolvable safety concerns." What would be an unresolvable safety concern for council?
Good question.
Thank you, which puts me a copa. This is my quick drafting, so if there's any grammatical errors. It seemed to me I was asleep at that portion of the English class back in grade seven. Sorry, Counselor. I think the point we're trying to get at is, we don't know what some of those things could be like. But if there are incidents, and if the provider isn't able to work with the community to resolve those and say, "Hey, this was an issue. What did you do? Is it likely to happen again?" Then at that point in time, then council will be well within its rights to say, "You're not carrying out the mandate we asked you."
What we expected.
What we expected. And so, you know, we can't start specifying, because maybe we don't want spit on the sidewalk, and that may be something that happens. So I think what we're saying here is, provider, you do understand the community concerns. You do understand the sense to them, and they do, I mean, that was made well aware of today. But if we ever reach a point, and they were quick to point out that if there were complaints, they wanted to receive them. But they wanted to be the point person to work, almost. But if there's a point where it's not being resolved to the satisfaction of council, regardless of what those issues are that is creating problems, then council would rescind the approval. That was my intent, Your Worship.
Okay, and without any further...
Don't whack anything down.
This is not the time for you to editorialize, this is the time for us to be asking the gallery. So is this really important?
Yeah, I'm kind of trying to figure out to get the answer of when the meeting is gonna be.
Ah.
Right? From the recess.
Before we go.
Yeah, that's why I...
Would you do that, Counselor?
Yeah, we'll...
So question is, would Wednesday evening be good now, or no, Mr. Mayor?
No, Wednesday evening, I won't be back from trail.
Okay, how about Thursday morning?
Do we want to leave it that long?
Yeah.
No. I don't like that. What about Wednesday morning early, before I leave for the regional district? I have to be there at 1 o'clock, it takes me two and a half hours to drive, 9 o'clock?
SAG meeting is Wednesday.
Not till the afternoon.
Not till 1 o'clock.
The position from Darren Ford, they may not have or be able to convene the meeting until possibly Wednesday morning as well.
Yeah.
So it's a challenge there. He's hoping to have an answer by Wednesday morning with everything, so that's why Wednesday evening, he would be free at around 7 o'clock.
Well, the option is you can go ahead without me, I'm not uncomfortable with that at this point.
Okay, so are we doing Wednesday evening?
Wednesday at 4 o'clock?
At 7 would be better.
Wednesday at 7?
Wednesday at 7.
Wednesday at 7.
Here?
Yeah.
And my meeting is at 1. If I can be back for the meeting, I will, but not knowing the road conditions and the length of the meeting, 450-page documents, I won't commit myself to it, and Counselor Crog is the acting mayor.
So just clarification, we will have Boundary Family Services making a presentation at a public meeting on that date.
Darren would be able to attend and speak to the document.
That's what we want.
Okay, recess, you said?
Yeah.
So until...
Until...
Resess till 7 o'clock? 7 o'clock on Wednesday night.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, you'll have to call me again.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Corle.
Thank you, Alexis. Goodbye, Google.